I want to welcome you to, excuse me, I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to ask you if you would please stand and join me in the invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come this evening to tell you thank you for all that you've done for us. We thank you, God, for this day. We thank you, God, for those that are present in this meeting, and we pray for your guidance. We ask, oh God, a special blessing upon those who are going through times of suffering and hardship, and we pray a special blessing for those families who are separated because of war on this evening. We ask, oh God, that you would bring them back together and let them be able to experience a reunion that's full and that's happy once again. We ask, oh God, your guidance in this meeting. We pray for wisdom, knowledge, and help us, oh God, to do the things that are right for this community, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daryl.
Yes.
Okay, the first thing I want to do is to review the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinances and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitive. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Are there any Planning Commission announcements? Stephanie Maurice? So the first order of business, general business, is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held February 1st, 2022, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion and second. How do you, do we need to vote on this? I never remember.
Yes.
We do need to vote, okay. I'm sorry, I'm new at this. So, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Our next order of business is SP, excuse me, XP 4910, Nick's Lane Housing. We're going to consider the site plan approval for four duplex buildings at 102 Nick's Lane and 166 Granville Nick's Lane, parcel 03-13146. The site is zoned medium residential, and Jessica Bick, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Hillpoint LLC owner. Maurice?
Maurice Postal, Glen County Planning and Zoning. You heard the rezoning application for this site last month. It was rezoned by the commission to medium residential on February 17th. There is a mobile home on the site right now, but it's no longer occupied by the residents. The site's being used for vehicle and equipment storage involved in Hillpoint Construction's two construction, adjoining construction projects, which are the Altama Office Complex and the Beverly Villas Apartments. And this site will be owned by the developer of the adjoining Beverly Villas Apartments, but will not be part of the Beverly Villas Apartment Complex site. It'll be its own independent multifamily site. And this is the zoning map, and these are the Beverly Villa Apartments up here. This is the Altama Office Complex, and this is the site right here. And this is the site plan for the site, showing the four duplex buildings. And these are what the duplexes are going to look like. They're going to look pretty much exactly like the ones next door at Beverly Villas. And we are recommending approval as presented.
So would someone from Robert Civil Engineering like to come up and speak?
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, here to represent the applicant and owner. We ask that you, at this time, could approve this site plan as it is presented and available for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Again, I'm still learning. So is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this project? If so, would you please come to the podium and state your name?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rachel Thompson. I'm the Executive Director of the Glen Environmental Coalition, and I'd first like to start by just apologizing that this was not on our radar sooner, and we did not speak on behalf of this proposal during the rezoning process. But I did want to take an opportunity to just make sure that this commission was aware that the only thing separating these properties from a superfund site, which is the Hercules 009 superfund site, is Nick's Lane. So it's about a 25 or 30-foot road, and then on the other side of that road is the Hercules 009 superfund site. My main question for you all, and also for the applicant, is if anyone has reached out to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency or the State Environmental Protection Division in regards to any public health concerns regarding people living this close to a superfund site? That's all I have for you guys this evening.
Just an answer from Ms. Thompson is that, yes, they have reached out to them, to the, I think it was the EPA as well, and they've done extensive testing, and that they feel that it is basically completely good for the intended use, and they have had extensive talks about this exact site.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would, I would assume that you spoke against that. Is there anyone else who wants to speak against this project? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, the public comment portion is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 4910 as presented.
Second.
All in favor? No opposition? So the motion passes. Okay, the next project that we have to talk about in the public comment section is SP 4915, J&amp;J Tire. Consider site plan approval for the construction of a 90-by-75-foot building for 10 additional service bays and connection to the existing J&amp;J Tire Pros facility at 233 Canler Road, parcel ID 03-12702. Chris Amos is here as the agent for Jacob Melton Used Rubber LLC owner.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Carey with Glen County Planning and Zoning. So right here, we have the site for the expansion of J&amp;J Tire. Some background, the application XS 4895 is the recombination plat that was used to join both Lot 49 and Lot 50. So now it is one entire lot. Construction of the 90-by-75 building for 10 additional bays to connect to the existing Here's the site plan. And here are your possible actions. And staff does recommend approval for this project.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Christopher, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on behalf of this Is there anyone in opposition who would like to speak? Mr. Amos, would you like to come up and speak?
Chris Amos with CSEC Incorporated, as agent for Jacob Melton, would just like you to approve the motion as presented. And thankfully, don't have a whole room full of people standing behind me to oppose this one.
There was no one when I asked them.
Any questions for me?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Chris?
Okay.
Yes.
You don't even have, it doesn't appear that you have the parking spaces for 10 more bays.
I don't recall how many parking spaces we have on the site plan. I can pull it up on my phone, but I don't remember.
Saying three spaces per service bay.
So we're adding, it's like about 20 or 30? I can't really, can I walk up here?
Yeah, and, and. Just to be honest here, I kind of have to walk a delicate fine line. Jacob is my cousin-in-law.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, I'm just curious, why are you not putting as much parking in that side as you got in the other side? There's parking all in front of the store.
How did I get that site plan back up here? I think I bumped the mouse.
And the space is available there. I'm just curious.
Well, the connecting structure between the two buildings is going to be a breezeway, so we can't park on either side of the breezeway because they're going to be bringing vehicles through.
We could stripe a few more spaces on the side, but that does restrict the turning movements of some of the larger vehicles coming through there.
Yes, sir.
I think we added as many as we felt like we could reasonably add without restricting circulation around the site.
Well, in all fairness, it always seems like a business of this nature never has enough parking. If you have 100 spaces, you really need 150. If you have 150, you need 200.
Jacob's business is very robust. He certainly has a lot of people out there.
No doubt. Okay, that's the end of my question.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Amos?
So the existing bays open on the side, right? And these bays are going to open in the front?
Yes.
So that's kind of the difference, I think, is his existing bays don't open on the front of the building. It's an office. So I don't think you could have those same striped ones in the, right at the building. It would block the bays, right?
That is correct. And this, all of this run, all of this addition is going to be for service only. There's no customer areas over there. It's all for service bays and the connecting breezeway.
Is the other parking lot paved all the way in the back?
Yes, it is.
So you could, they could park there as well, behind the building?
The last time I was there, there were a lot of vehicles back there. I don't think they were parking customer vehicles. I think they were vehicles being repaired.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Christopher? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to pass this site plan.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposition? So this has been approved. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing conditional use permit. CUP 4914 Brunswick Storage Conditional Use Permit. Request for a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse climate-controlled storage facility in the Highway Commercial Zoning District 100 and 200 Daniel Lane, parcel ID 03-21612 and 0320987. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Design, Manage, Advise, applicant, and Stephen Juris, owner.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, again, Glen County Planning and Zoning. So a little bit of background on this project. There is a total size of the site of 3.18 acres, comprised of a 1.3-acre and 1.88-acre project site for 100 and 200 Daniel Lane. Proposed building size is 23,868 square feet, and there is a companion site plan, SP 4913, that would get a, chance to get approved if this is approved. Here is the site in red, 100 and 200 Daniel Lane. Here is the survey. Here is a close-up of the project. And your possible actions. And that is all.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Christopher? Okay, Mr. Hunt, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of the project? Please introduce yourself.
Commissioners, Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. As representative for the owner and agent, I ask that you approve this as presented, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and so we will do, people who want to speak against this project first. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak against this project? Is there anyone here who wants to speak to support this project? Hearing none, seeing none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve CUP 4914 as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, how do you vote? Who's in favor? No opposition. So CUP 4914, excuse me, yeah, CUP 4914 passes. The next item on our agenda is public hearing, is another public hearing zoning decision. ZM 4932, Oscar Lane Plan Development District. Request to rezone parcels 03-14053, 14054, 14055, 14056, and 14057 on Oscar Lane from the Palm Trace Plan Development District, GC 4579, into a newly created Plan Development District. All proposed uses are residential. Robert E. Blackwell, Out of G LLC owner.
Maurice Postal again. The five lots in this application are currently in a PD called the Palm Trace Plan Development, and the PD text for that plan development states that there can only be a total of 136 dwelling units within the entire PD. The Palm Club Apartments and three other duplex lots are in the same PD, and they've used up all of the 136 dwelling units already. And due to this, the five lots in the zoning application have never been developed. And unless these lots are rezoned, they have absolutely no economically viable use. The applicant is requesting to take these five lots out of that PD and create a new residential PD. And the new PD will have similar uses to MR zoning, including single-family homes, town homes, and multifamily dwellings, but unlike MR, it will also allow mobile homes on each lot. The density in this PD will be 18 units per acre. However, because the entire PD is only .88 acres, there could only be a total maximum of 15 units within this PD if the property were to be developed as multifamily. And this is the zoning map, the five lots have these blue stars, and this is the Palm Club Apartments right here, and this lot here. And this lot here, and these two lots here are the other lots within the Palm Trace Plan Development. And this is the survey showing the entire project sites only point eight eight acres, these five lots right here. These are your possible choices tonight. And the property owner, Mr. Blackwell, is here tonight to answer any questions.
Mr. Blackwell, well first, does anyone have any questions of Maurice? I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the layout of the lots, were they platted like that as part of the PD? Or were they existing lots of the already-platted neighborhood to come up with that configuration?
The property owner may be able to answer that better. I don't know that they were platted as part of the PD. Surveys that I've seen, like a big blob, basically, in the past.
It was a big what?
Big blob.
That's a technical term.
The technical term, yeah.
You know, they just look like they probably were, I mean, I could be wrong, platted as single-family lots to begin with. I'm not familiar enough to know. And I know there's duplexes further down, but I don't think there's duplexes right there.
Yeah, no, this, yeah, these two lots and then this lot here duplexes.
They are?
Yeah, yeah, no, they're two units per site.
Okay. So if we approve the PD, they could come in and build something besides duplexes or single-family homes. It could be more of an apartment complex.
Sure, there could be a total of fifteen apartment units.
But did I understand you just say that there could also be mobile homes?
Yes, the PD text states that there could also be one mobile home per lot, unlike MR zoning.
And is there currently any mobile homes right accessible from that area?
I don't think in the immediate vicinity, no, I don't think there are. But there are a variety of type, different types of housing, multifamily, duplexes, single-family homes is a wide mix.
So was the mobile home request a specific request of the owner?
Yes, that wasn't in the previous PD.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? Mr. Blackwell, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
My name is Bob Blackwell. And as Maurice said, I'm the owner. With regard to mobile homes in the area, well, I guess first with duplexes, there's kind of that bottom row south of that Cross Street, Horizontal Street. Those are pretty much all duplexes. There's a lot of different housing types around there. And just off of this map, and it may even start on the right side past the, well, no, it wouldn't because this is only showing up to the last duplex lot. But if you see that little green or gray area, or green or yellow, whatever you want to call that color at the top of that, I'm pretty sure that's where there's mobile homes. There's some pretty old mobile homes. And then this, that lane pretty quickly goes into, and they're on those cross streets. Then it dead ends and it goes by the, what used to be the, what is it, the water filter guy? Anyways, in there, there's, and there's like a little mobile home part there. So it's an interesting mix. And the reason that I asked for that, and I don't know that it would ever go that way, but with, you know, it's not a, it's not a high-priced neighborhood. And so you want to build something that if you wanted to sell it to, for homeowners, that would be affordable and would kind of mix price-wise with the neighborhood potentially. And of course, now, mobile home manufacturers, homes, whatever you want to call them, you know, those prices have gone crazy too, like everything else. So the reason that was asked for was just to have the flexibility that these lots ultimately get built on. I was just looking on the tax assessors and kind of across from the bottom star, if you will, I think that house was built in seventy-nine and maybe the one up at the corner was built in eighty-three. So that neighborhood's been there a while. And I like Maurice, I don't know if those were platted together, but I would kind of almost think they might have been. They're different sizes than the ones across the street. And again, they all got zoned in with the apartments. And if you kind of see, you know, it kind of makes a nice, I can envision in my mind where it would have been one tract of land, but who knows?
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Blackwell, you're wanting to include the mobile home reference for potential build-out or someone buying that property. You're not planning on putting mobile homes, a mobile home park there?
No, I wouldn't envision, you know, the purpose being rentals. I would say that, of course, you never know. I mean, sometimes you build things and you can't sell them, so then therefore they become rentals. But in my mind, it would be so that somebody can afford a home. And, you know, if you've got a piece of land under it, you can get, you know, traditional longer-term financing on a manufactured home, mobile home. I guess there's actually slight distinction, but so that would, you know, enable somebody to maybe afford a home that they might not otherwise.
Any other questions?
I do have one question. What are the sizes of the lots? Are they half-acre or less or?
No, sir. The total is only point eight eight acres. So the square footage of each lot is seven thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. And the dimensions, maybe ninety-foot of frontage, if it sounds right. The dimensions, I think it's about eighty-five foot of frontage, if I'm reading this correctly, and ninety foot of depth. And again, they all back up to the apartment complex there. So they're all uniform, they're all exactly the same square footage. Of course, the ones that I don't own look like they're a little different size maybe, but the ones we're talking about.
Mr. Blackwell, do you have water and sewer on those lots?
Yes, sir. It's, all the infrastructure's there. Everything is there.
Any other questions of Mr. Blackwell? Okay, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is a public hearing. If there is anyone here who wants to speak in favor of ZM 4932, would you come forward and state your name? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Would you come forward and state your name? Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners? How do you? How do you want to vote?
Madam Chair, I offer the motion that we approve ZM 4932 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? One opposition, so the motion carries. Okay, the next on our, the next item on our agenda is another public hearing item, ZM 4931 Glendale Park, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises Rezone. Request to rezone an approximate nine point nine acre tract from R9 M20 and MH20, one-family residential zoning districts to planned development district. The property is located at 145 and 149 Glendale Drive, 109 and 110 Thistle Lane, and one landlocked parcel, parcel numbers 03, 03664, 0310771, 039294, 0315689, and 0303662. The proposed uses are material storage for a limited time, two years, single-family and multifamily residential and commercial. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Josh Kirkland, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises LLC, applicant and owner. Ms. Stephanie?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 4931. It's Glendale, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises Rezone. And the chair mentioned that it is a rezone from a mix of some residential districts to a planned development district that would include multifamily, single-family, commercial, and then the two years of material storage. The comprehensive plan does show that this is a commercial area in terms of the future land use map. And then also the comprehensive plan, character area map shows this as a mixed-use area. So this project originally came to the county's attention. It's been about a year. It did come to us as a code enforcement action. We received complaints about sudden arrival of a large amount of wood chips stored on this property and that it was a residential property. So the code enforcement manager and I got in touch with Mr. Kirkland as the owner of the property to discuss that the storage of wood chips was not an allowed use under the residential zoning and that the wood chips would either need to be removed from the site within a certain amount of time or the applicant could apply to rezone the property in order to try to gain compliance and potentially allow the wood chips as an allowed use. So early summer, Mr. Kirkland did apply for his first rezone application. It had, was missing some of the required information to be a complete application. So when the county did not receive a resubmital, the county did close that application. So then a few months later, Mr. Kirkland did submit another application that was a rezone to the light industrial zoning district. And that would be, or limited industrial zoning district, excuse me, to allow the storage of the wood chips long-term on the property. And that actually was noticed for a public hearing in front of the MPC in January. But right before the public hearing, the applicant did withdraw that application over some concerns about how to handle that wood chip storage and maybe to approach it a different way. And so soon after that, the applicant did apply for the application that's before you tonight. They decided to go about it as applying for a planned development district to continue to allow the wood chip storage up to two years. And then the PD does show that that would sunset. And then the property would be rezoned per the PD, if this is approved, to the mix of residential and commercial uses. I will note, I'm talking with the county attorney's office, and I talked to Mr. Hightower, the agent as well, the planned development text that you all have in your packet does show that this wood chip storage is a special use. And typically, special uses and conditional uses are kind of interchangeable in the county zoning code where a special use or conditional use permit would require a public hearing before the planning commission and a public hearing before the board of commissioners. That is how we handle special uses. And talking with Mr. Hightower, I asked if that was their intent, was if this PD is approved, would they then come back before this board and the VOC to apply for special use to allow the wood chip storage? And he said that was not the intent. And perhaps maybe using the term temporary storage or a permitted use with a sunset clause was more what they had in mind, more of a matter of terminology and how we handle that. But what they had intended was this PD would cover wood chip storage up to two years and then have those other uses that would be allowed after the storage would sunset. So on the screen and in your packets, there is a copy of the planned development text. And then this is a survey of the property. It is at the corner of Glendale and Pickrick. And they are showing their primary location coming off of Glendale. And this is an image that shows where they would have the material bulk storage. And if you've been by the site, it is most of the property now, and this just formalizes where they would be placing that. And then this is a recent photo of the wood chip storage on the property. And this is looking from Glendale Road. And then just the surrounding area across the street is, within the last few years, relatively new, two-family dwelling project called Settlers Cove. And there also, behind this property, there is some multifamily as well. And these are your possible actions. Happy to answer any questions about this project. And Mr. Hightower, as well as the owner, are here this evening. If you have any questions of them, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have some questions of Ms. Leaf?
I do have one question, Stephanie, and I don't know whether you can answer this or Mr. Kirkland can answer it better, but I was just wondering why the two years, is that given so that they would have time to, I guess, clean up the wood chips? Or, I mean, why the two years?
Yeah, and I'm sure they can add on to that, but I know when we originally talked with Mr. Kirkland, you know, early part of last year, when we were first made aware of the storage on the site, I know what he had mentioned was because of the amount of material that is on the site, just shipping it off the site, just the logistics and the time that would take would be almost two years or eighteen months. So, and I'm sure they can add more to that. Who put the wood chips there? My understanding is one of Mr. Kirkland's companies placed the wood chips on the site. That's correct, yeah. He had purchased the property and the wood chips were brought to the site after his purchase, correct?
Stephanie, if I understand correctly, this is considered hazardous material? Is that correct?
It's something that we, I'm not sure if I can answer that question specifically. I know when this was first brought to our attention, we did work with the fire department because there was a lot of concern about it being combustible and that it would, you know, there could be a fire. And so I know the fire department had looked at different monitoring, and I know the owner had put, I think, some sprinkler systems on the property to make sure, to kind of keep the dust and keep everything, you know, to reduce the possibility of combustibility over on the site. Hazardous, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, is wood chips, I don't know what kind of materials might be in those wood chips as well. So I think applicant might be able to help with that question a little more.
I have another question. And that question, it might be better directed to Mr. Hightower, but I'm going to ask you this question. How long did it take to put those wood chips on that site? To move them to that site?
That, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure how long it had been in process before we got the first phone call about the, that they were out there.
But it wasn't two years?
Correct, it was not two years. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, just from what I know about it, I would say a matter of less than a month. But I think they can address that better.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Leaf? Mr. Hightower, would you like to come forward and speak?
Jake Hightower, with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you again for your time tonight to look over this PD text and have the conversation about this project. Mr. Kirkland is here, and he will be able to help answer a lot of the questions as to how we got to this point and kind of plan forward. But my purpose here for this PD text was to figure out, what are we going to do going forward? What can we do to remedy the storage, the pellets on the site? And then afterwards, once we get those cleaned up, what can we do to get this use back in line with the rest of the neighborhood? And so that's why we did pull our first zoning application in order to pull that back and kind of get back to the drawing board to say, okay, what do we need to do to get a temporary use and then also future use from there? So that's why, like Ms. Leaf said before, we labeled it special use, but really we're asking to change that word from special use to temporary use. Basically, we just want a sunset clause for these pellets so that they can't be stored indefinitely. But then afterwards, let's see, scroll. You can see there's a, there is a ditch that runs through the property right now. And so what we're going to do is we're going to dedicate this portion along the frontage roads, along Pickrick and Glendale as a residential use. It's not as high-dense as multifamily, multi, or sorry, medium residential. Medium residential would be sixteen units per acre. But we've seen that ten units per acre has kind of been some kind of sweet spot for PD texts for what the county's been approving lately. So this is four point four acres on this side, and so that would be no more than forty-four units. We put on our PD text a different kind of variety of either one-family residential, we can plat that, or we can do medium, or sorry, multifamily residential or duplexes similar to Settlers Cove, which is similar to Settlers Cove, which is across the street. But we will be, basically, once that two years is gone, we'll by that time have a plan of what we're going to do going forward to turn this into a residential, kind of reverting back to what it can be. On the backside of property is going to be commercial use, and the PD text very clearly states that it will be a use of, let me make sure I get it right, an office building for offices for business, professional, general purposes, a commercial parking lot, and a warehouse storage facility provided that all access services are paved. So basically, it is going to be a storage facility in line with all the uses. It's all limited industrial when you look to the east of the property on the other side of the railroad. So this will just be a commercial parking lot with a potential building for his equipment, but it's not going to be industrial use by any means. With that, Mr. Kirkland is here, and if I can answer any questions, if not, I can have him come up and answer some questions as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Hightower?
I have some questions, and I think they probably better ask of Mr. Kirkland. These pellets that are on this lot, were they in the warehouse that caught fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at some point, they've been exposed to some type of fire retardant?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Have there been any studies done on the environmental impact?
They didn't have fire retardant, I'm sorry, it was water.
Water?
Water only.
Okay.
Saltwater.
All right, well, listen, I'd, given the track record of the applicant, I don't know that I necessarily believe that without getting a report. That said, I just, I have a hard time believing it. So I would almost like to see the county request an environmental study on these chips because if they do have chemicals in them and we get rain, that chemical washes into that creek, that ditch, that fallout, whatever you're calling it. And what does that do to the groundwater? What does that do to soil for neighboring lots?
If I may, real fast, that brought up a good point that I forgot to mention originally. When we were brought this project, we went, the first thing we did was we called the county and said, what do we need to do for this property right here? And they said two things. One is get it back in line with zoning. And two is, engineering staff said, we need an LDA to make sure that that stream is protected. So the first thing we did is we ordered surveys for the wetlands, and then we also secured an LDA with the GSWCC to make sure that there is going to be adequate, there already was silt fencing, but this solidified the silt fence to show where it's going to be double-row protection around wetlands. And then we also have a monitoring program to make sure that there is no runoff from rain. So from the runoff perspective, that's what we can answer to, but I'll let you answer to the points as well.
So as far as the chips being put out, if you will, the city, county, you know, all sprayed it with water for days on end, turning the chips back into sawdust. They are in a combustible form when they're in the pellet, but when they're back in the sawdust form, they're not. When they get wet, they turn from the pellet back into, you know, the natural sawdust state. To my knowledge, all they had was water. They have a 10-inch line which was installed back in 2015 when the original fire happened at that building and burned the wood building down that draws right out the river basin. The county hooked to those lines when they were extinguishing the fire here. So I would have no reason to believe anything other than saltwater, you know, and freshwater. I was out there within a few hours of the fire starting.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirkland, what are the, these pellets, what are their intended use?
They, so when this originally happened, Fram contacted me. I contacted Pinova to take them to Pinova, to sell them to Pinova. Pinova agreed they wanted them. Pinova told me that they were going to let me store them on their facility. Their legal team, after I agreed to take them and we started getting the process going, their legal team told them that they would have to pay for them in full if they were stored on their property, and their purchasing department, you know, wouldn't allow that. Thus, I've stored them here. We're hauling approximately 100, 150 tons a day to Pinova. The one picture is on the left side, but if you had a picture on the right side of the ditch there before and after, you would see we've moved, you know, half the pile in the past three months to Pinova. We're hauling them to them five, six, seven days a week in some cases.
So half of the pile has already been removed?
On the right-hand side, not the left-hand side. I haven't started on the left-hand side there.
Do you know of any other places in our county, Glen County, that those pellets are what you're calling sawdust now are stored?
I have some at my farm. There's probably 1,500 tons at my farm, at my house.
And approximately how many tons are stored off Glendale?
There's about 23,000 left.
And just for my clarity, is this right down from your business?
It's right next door to my office, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Jake, you mentioned something about some kind of silt. Now, is that in place now?
Yes, ma'am, the silt fence?
Yes, it is in place, okay. Any other questions of Mr. Hightower or Mr. Kirkland?
Mr. Kirkland, when you purchased this property originally, what was your intended?
I didn't have a particular intended use, to be honest with you. I purchased it because it was right next to me and I own the property on the other side of it as well.
Yes, sir.
I didn't have a, you know, hey, this is what I'm going to do with it, but...
So let me ask, let me ask this question. Did anyone from the county tell you that it would be okay to store, did the Glen County Fire Department or any personnel that works for Glen County tell you that it would be okay to store those chips there temporarily?
They did not give me approval, no, sir. I talked to Benny Crawford after I first started doing it, and he said, as long as it's just sawdust, it's fine.
And who's Benny Crawford?
He works for Glen County. That's when I had originally started hauling them in.
And he's authorized to tell you that?
No, ma'am, I would not think he would be, by no means.
But now, you did say that you're in the process of transferring those to Hercules site?
Yeah, so they burn them in their power border fuel. You know, they add it to their other fuel as an additive, but because it's in a sawdust form, you know, it atomizes well in conjunction, you know, with other fuels. You know, they run off of natural gas as well.
So in other words, Hercules had already purchased?
They have not purchased, they purchased it on every ton that I haul them. They have not purchased the pile, no.
Okay, so as you...
They have agreed to, yes.
Right, okay.
Josh?
Sir?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kirkland, how many loads, semi-trailer loads, would you say was put there originally?
I wouldn't venture to say that, to be honest with you.
Do you have any estimate of how many?
There was 33,000 tons to start with.
The truck will hold 26 tons?
No, those trucks are only holding about 15, 16 tons.
So it's pretty lightweight?
Yes, it's pretty lightweight.
Mr. Kirkland, I do have one other point that I'd like to talk to you about.
Yes, sir.
It's been some months ago, but I personally was driving down Glendale Drive, going to lunch one day, heading towards CPAC off of 341. And one of your trucks came out of that lot going back toward 341 and was running so fast and on my side of the road that if you go back to that picture of Settlers Cove, you'll see a rut. Mr. Miller, I owe you for that rut because I had to run off the road to keep from being hit by your driver. I blew my horn, he stuck his hand out the window to let me know I was number one, and I'd called your office.
Yes, sir.
And I asked to speak to the owner. And they said, Josh is not here, can, will he, can he call you back? And I said, yes, gave him my name and my telephone number.
Yes, sir.
I guess you didn't get that message because I still hadn't got a phone call.
I would presume that I didn't.
Okay. I needed to tell you that story to tell you an idea. I would like to see if we approve this.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see you move the entrance and exit from Glendale Drive to Pickrick Street. That way, your driver has to stop at a stop sign before turning right or left. And I would like to see you, for aesthetics, put up a six-foot fence with screening or slats or whatever. If we, if we can agree to give you the two years that you're asking for, I don't see either of those requests as being out of line.
I would agree with that.
So if we did that and agreed to give you this application request, you would be okay with those two requests? And we could make those part of the conditions of our motion?
Sure, sure, just, you know, give me a few weeks to get that done, obviously.
Understood, understood, okay.
Any other questions?
Real fast, on the fence, did you say along Glendale was where you had the fence?
Yes, yes. I have one additional question, it'll be the last one. If, if we pass this tonight?
Yes, sir.
We give you what you're asking for, it's your intention to build a subdivision or build houses there at some point?
I've spoke with Clint Miller concerning developing that front side to a multifamily residential similar to Settlers Cove. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
And you're planning before you start any of that to have all the pellets and the dust?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All that complete? We won't be mixing and matching or anything like that?
No, sir, I got to have all that cleaned up. I mean, you couldn't build a subdivision thing there with...
So it's in your best interest to get all this cleaned up?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Perfect world, Pinova doesn't put, you don't expect them to put a hold all of a sudden, they don't need your material?
No, sir, I've actually spoke to them at length about that. You know, we didn't haul last week because they were in shutdown. But I've actually, tomorrow, we'll start out there with a D8 dozer, cleaning up their wood chip pile to give us more room to even haul more out there to their bulk storage at a faster rate.
So if you get, weather's going to get bad, you'll have good weeks, by the way. Your anticipation...
Weather doesn't affect that.
Your anticipation of long-term, what would be the longest you're looking at cleaning it up?
Well, that's why we asked for two years. We don't believe it'll really take two years, but we just asked for that as a safety measure.
Okay, because you had two significant piles there?
Yes, sir.
You got half of one done, so you're about a quarter of the way and you've been working at it?
I would say so, maybe not quite a quarter of the way, but close. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, Mr. Kirkland, if we should ask to amend this and ask you to shorten your time period to move that to perhaps a year, how would you feel about that?
I would prefer not to, just because you never know what, you know, the unknown is. We, obviously, it's in our best interest to get rid of it as fast as we can. You know, number one, two, you know, be better neighbors. Number two is revenue income. Number three, you know, look better.
Well, and it's the unknown about what this, what the potential is for this is why I'm asking about? Whether or not you would be agreeable to shorten that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kirkland?
No, for Mr. Kirkland, I do have one for staff. Stephanie, is there a way to guarantee that this goes back to a residential zoning at the end of this?
So the only way to really guarantee that would be incorporated in the planned development that that is, but because they are proposing, it could be commercial or residential. So if you're only comfortable with residential, then that would have to be what's limited. So after the two years, then it's only a residential zone that could be, or residential uses that could be allowed there.
Mr. Hightower, is that agreeable or?
I was just going to say that we did specify on our plan what's going to be residential versus commercial. So since it's part of that plan, from my understanding, working on many PD texts across the county, if we put it in this plan, we can't then go and say the left side's not going to be commercial too without coming before you again as another PD text amendment. Is that correct? Yeah, so basically, the way this, the way this plan reads, it would require an amendment to go to say the whole thing residential or the whole thing commercial or change it of any sort.
I don't want to beat this dead horse, Stephanie, I apologize for this. In order to ensure that it does go back to residential, can you explain again why we can't make this a special use permit request?
So you definitely could. That can definitely be what you, so if you did make this a special use for the wood chip storage, well, right now, it's not, so under the current zoning under residential, you, they could not get a special use permit for the wood chip storage because the wood chip storage is not a permit, you know, it's not a permitted, it's not conditional, it's not a special use at all, so it's just not in there. So by rezoning to the PD, they could establish this as a special use and follow the process that we do for the other conditional and special uses where there'd be a public hearing before you all again and a public hearing before the VOC. So if that is the pleasure of the Mainland Planning Commission, then that could be how it is written. I don't, I know that's not the applicant's intent or desire, but if that's where you feel more comfortable is having that special use permit involved, I don't know if attorney's office wants to comment anymore on that because we talked a little bit about that.
Well, I think that's how it's written and how it's presented to you presently is that they would have to go through the special use permit process in order for this to go forward. If we want to change it back to a permitted use, I think we would have to modify that now. So as it's presented to you, it's currently a special use permit, but they're requesting that we don't have it as a special use, that it be modified.
I'm not sure I understood what you said.
Yeah, neither do I.
The PD text, as I interpret it, as it's presented to you tonight, currently has it as a special use, so they would have to go through the special use permit process, but they're asking that it be modified going forward, that it not be special use and instead be permitted use. But if you want it to be a special use permit, then you don't need to change anything. It's currently presented to you in the PD text as a special use.
So at the end of the 24 months that they're asking for, it would go back to a residential zoning?
On that, I'm not entirely certain, but I think you could deny to grant them another special use permit.
Okay.
And just a, it would not go back to the zoning that it currently is. I mean, currently, it's the, it was our list of...
Well, there's three, R9, M20, and MH20.
That's right. So it would not go back to that. It would go back to the residential and the commercial, or not go back, but it would go to the residential and commercial that's specified in the PD. So if you're comfortable with those uses, then that's what would be there, be allowed there after the two years is up. But I, but if the question is, can the two years of the, or the wood storage go away and it returns to this specific zoning, and that's not something that we have the ability to do unless those are the only uses in the PD, if that makes sense? So sometimes that's come up, if someone says, well, this is okay, but if it changes or doesn't end up being this particular use, can we go, can we revert back to what it was before? And that's something that's trickier to do and often not able to do.
I guess I have another question for you, Stephanie. It is my understanding that, that Mr. Kirkland has been fined multiple times, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. There is an active code enforcement case ongoing, so there have been fines and court hearings coming up. We've been, you know, what we often do with code enforcement cases is we give the applicant an opportunity to get in compliance, and by going through this rezone process is their attempt to get in compliance. And so we have pushed those hearings off. I know that the next one is scheduled for April to allow them to go through this process through the month of March. And potentially by the end of March, there'd be a decision made by the, by the county on whether it's going to be rezoned or not.
I'm still, I'm still battling with whether this is, there's hazardous material out there. I mean, when we first asked the question, yes, it was sprayed with fire retardant. Then two seconds later, it was no, it wasn't sprayed. And then, well, I'm not sure if it was sprayed. So I don't think he knows. And I don't think that anybody's going to know until some type of study's done. So I would like to make a motion that we defer this. I would like to make a motion that we defer this to another meeting to have a study done.
Can we do that before we...
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. It's been, we've been going, beating this so long, I didn't realize that.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Edgy, Pineova wouldn't be able to burn their power board if it had hazardous material in it?
Good point. Thank you.
Okay, this, this is a public hearing. And so I would like to ask if there is anyone in, in the room who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone within the public who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Please come forward. State your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Thompson, Executive Director of the Glen Environmental Coalition and Mainland Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on case number ZM4931. As Stephanie described, this came to the county because of a complaint. That complaint was facilitated by the Glen Environmental Coalition in response to citizens who had called our office with concerns. Also, as Stephanie described, this is the third rezoning application that the property owner has submitted to Glen County staff. I'm gonna kinda jump forward since she went through some of the various steps. It should be noted that the property owner cleared land without presenting applications for land disturbance activities to the Mainland Planning Commission, Glen County Commission, and the Glen County Tree Advisory Board, which ceases to exist despite Glen County ordinance requiring approval from the tree board. Despite this, the property owners have continued to operate a light industrial operation on the property since mid-May. The Glen Environmental Coalition has been monitoring this property since May 2021, when citizens began contacting our office. Complaints and concerns from the community included not understanding why the land was abruptly cleared without any public participation processes, concerns regarding wetlands and nearby water bodies on the property, dust, noise, and other air quality concerns, and concerns for the types of materials being stored on the site. Further investigation by the GEC in coordination with Glen County staff and the Environmental Protection Division revealed that the property owner cleared the property without securing a land clearing permit. And in addition, they had not submitted any erosion and sedimentation plans and no best management practices were installed on the site at this time. Additionally, since then, we've compiled eight documented complaints filed to the Environmental Protection Division. And I do have printouts for all of you if you would like one. I'm happy to distribute those if you would like. Thank you, Stephanie. Oops, I lost my place. Complaints start at the Logistec facility downtown and make their way all the way to the residents that are living in the newly constructed townhouses across the street from the property in question. Complaints showcase the blatant neglect of local ordinances and state law in regards to proper storage and transport of material. This should be taken into consideration by this commission when considering to allow the property owner to continue to store and transport material from the site for the next two years. Material currently stored on site are relocated wood pellets from Wood Logistec following the fires in May, which the state fire marshal required Logistec to relocate all of their material to be stored elsewhere. This commission must also consider what risks are posed to neighboring residential properties by storing a highly flammable material here. In numerous complaints filed by the Environmental Protection Division, the state agency recommends that concerned residents contact the local fire department, in this case Glen County Fire Department, the Georgia Office of Commissioner of Insurance, Safety, and Fire, State Fire Marshal Investigative Unit, to ensure that they are in compliance with International Fire Code and National Fire Protection Associate standards. Has Glen County staff, the property owner, or their engineering consultants contacted any of these entities to ensure that all fire standards are being followed closely to ensure that there's no safety concerns exist by storing the material here? In addition to the wood pellets and other wood materials, there is an unknown gray substance that has been identified, that is yet to be identified by Glen County staff or Environmental Protection Division staff. And if you look at the image on the second page, you'll see that there's the wood pellet material and then there's a light dusty gray material. We do not know what that is. It's an ash and color material, possibly ash from the Logistec fire or something else. Before approving this zoning request, the commission should inquire as to what this material is to better understand the public health and environmental implications of its storage. I'm probably getting close to my time, so I'm gonna pause there and answer some of the questions that y'all were asking. It took about one and a half to two months for the storage of this material to get there. So the fire was on May 2nd, and by May 24th, our organization was filing complaints due to the material on site. Complaint ID 96493, which is the first one that's on the complaint log there, actually says, and this is from the EPD's investigation, "The material outside was injected with foam to attempt to reduce its temperature." I don't know what kind of foam, but to answer your question, there was a foam-type material that was injected. Also in this complaint, there are references to three other complaints from the three other areas that this storage material is being stored in town. So wherever this material goes, complaints are following it. What's that? I do, actually, and it's listed right here. So the Glendale Road location is listed as one. Property owned by Cameron Owens on Galilee Road in Glen County. And actually, I think that, hold on, it might just be two other locations. And then, the last thing that I wanted to say was that the wood pellets are considered a recovered material according to the Georgia Solid Waste Rules and Regulations. So, and the solid waste rules governs all, all solid waste of any sort. So there might be some public health implications with that. And I'll close there, because I'm probably very close to my time. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Otherwise, I do appreciate the opportunity to comment. And of course, we do oppose the approval of this and would prefer that the material be removed immediately.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Thompson?
I do. I have one. Ms. Thompson, is there any record that shows when it was at the marine port, it was checked before moving?
It was what, sorry?
Was it tested at the marine port before we decided to spread all this all over Glen County?
I am not aware of it being tested before it was moved.
Shouldn't it have been?
Absolutely, I believe so.
Okay.
Yes. And some of the complaints also from the EPD's investigation reveal that there are metal shards from the building that burned over top of it, and they were trying to sift those out as they were moving it. So there could be various metals within the material as well. Thank you.
I, I do have one question before you leave.
Sure.
Just a quick question. Now, would this be considered all of the complaints? Or are there other complaints still out there?
So there are eight complaints that have been lodged with the EPD. Those are the main complaints that we are aware of. Sometimes when individuals call the Environmental Protection Division, if they do not state specifically, "I want to lodge a formal complaint", then it does not get tracked through their complaint tracking system. So it is possible that other residents called, and if they did not specifically state that they were lodging, if, wanted to lodge official complaint, it wouldn't be in here. So yes, it's possible that other people have called and they were not documented in the EPD's portal. And there is an open complaint, so if you look at the last, I think, the second page, there is a complaint that is still open and under investigation that was filed in September. And so that remains open and under investigation by the state agency. And I'm not sure when they're planning on closing that. But we continue to see trucks leaving the facility that have debris, that's leaving the vehicles, which is not allowed under certain erosion, sedimentation, and air quality rules. And so that's why the EPD is keeping that open because even last month, documentation was sent to the EPD and they decided to keep the investigation open because there were issues still occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I do have a question, and I thank Ms. Thompson for what, what she shared. And just for clarity, maybe Mr. Kirkland could, you know, kinda talk us through what that gray material is that's stored on the site?
The gray material is perlite from down at S&amp;B Minerals, down at Logistec. That material is being hauled to the, that material was brought in on a, like a Saturday, Sunday, when the landfill's not open. And that material's been hauled to the landfill, you know, throughout the week now. There's probably eight or 10 loads of it left there now. That material is non-hazardous. It's, you know, what you use in potting soil. You have it in Colgate toothpaste. It's the grit you have in your toothpaste. That's what perlite is.
And where did that come from?
S&amp;B Minerals, down here at, at Logistec.
You're mixing it in with...
No, ma'am, it's in a separate pile off the side there. Yes, ma'am. And it's being hauled to the landfill. I mean, there's probably, there might be 10 loads left.
Mr. Kirkland, you, you mentioned earlier that putting the water on the chips put them back into a sawdust form, which is non-flammable?
That is correct.
How do you get them back to pellet form that...
You don't.
You don't?
You don't, no, sir. They're not able to be put back in pellet form because the pine tar in the pine chip, when it's initially cut, you've, you've dealt with the pine tree before, it has the tar, that's, that's part of the process that holds the pellet together. Okay, so once it's, you know, wet again, that process is gone and, you know, it can't be done again.
Well, I assume that was the case, but when, when you said that Pinova burns it...
They atomize it. So they have to, you know, blow it into a dust in conjunction with, you know, natural gas and, and other, other things as well.
Thank you. I, I've learned something tonight, so this is...
They use it as a fuel supplement.
Okay.
Yes, a supplement.
And they'll be using more of it when fuel prices get higher and higher.
They already are. Yes, sir.
Now, I, I just, I wanna ask you a couple of questions about your trucking.
Yes, sir.
All your trucks have tarps on them, correct?
They do, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. They're all DOT compliant.
They are, yes, sir.
You're not doing any, when you move your sawdust now
Yes, sir.
from your place to Pinova, you're not doing anything that a log truck, a pine chip trailer, or any other
Dump truck.
Things going to, a dump truck is doing, that's going to, let's just say, George Pacific?
That's correct, yes, sir.
There's a certain, I don't care what you do, there's a certain amount of material going to come out.
Unless you have a tarping system that closes and encapsulates the trailer, you know, as a hazardous waste-type haul.
It's impossible.
It's impossible, yes, sir.
Mr. Kirkland, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just trying to help move it along.
Sure.
We know the material's there. It's gotta get moved.
Yes, ma'am.
I think all of us, maybe not all of us, maybe this end of the table, are very concerned about a two-year time period. And then I think we're a little in flux that this is probably not the right time to be asking for it to be zoned commercial or industrial. I guess it's just basically commercial. So if we were to propose that the PD text only be for residential and that you remove the materials within 12 months instead of 24 months, would that be something you would agree to? Because we're, I don't, I don't know, you're gonna, you're gonna get much better than that tonight.
We, we've only asked for the two years just as a, a safety measure. I mean, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we could maybe meet in the middle of 18 months.
And then what about the residential only?
We've got it specified that we want the front half to be residential and the back half commercial. I mean, are we opposed to the back half being commercial to, you use for truck parking and for...
I think there's, definitely, I probably have a little concern in that it doesn't seem like we're in, we're in this situation where things have not been done correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think changing residential to commercial is, you know, in most people's opinion, a strong ask. And, and that until it is, the issue that's there is resolved, that, that maybe this is not the right time to ask for that to be commercial. You could certainly come back and say, "Hey, I did exactly what I said I'd do. I moved out all the dust." You know, we could get more feedback from the, from the neighbors. I think at this point, everybody's just focused on the material and, and come back and ask for an amendment to the PD text. But my understanding is we need it to be a PD text to do either a conditional use or a permitted use that you're asking for. So the, it being PD residential solves that, I think. And we would, could have a permitted use, which would not require another hearing, right? Besides it just going to the commission?
Yeah, so you're asking if we can put this as a permitted use for, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
My name is Clint Miller. And I've had multiple conversations with Josh. And I'm not here to be for it and I'm not here to be against it. I have more vested interest in this than anybody other than, you know, I own all the property across the road. I own Settlers Cove, and I own every single unit behind this property. So I've got a total of 39 units at stake, based on what happens here. And Josh and I have had several conversations. And when he first bought the property, he and I, you know, talked about doing some things together. And along the way, you know, Mr. Hightower and Josh have both been willing to exercise some of the things that they were wanting to do originally. I think that's why they pulled it out originally. They, they have tried to include me in. My biggest thing was I, no offense to Josh, he's an industrial business. The last thing I wanted to see was a residential parcel turned into industrial to make it look like his other places do all the way down. And I've talked to him. I've ta, I don't do it behind his back. I've talked to him. Last thing I wanted to see was I tried to build a really, really nice place there. And I didn't wanna see everything across the road turn into industrial. And I told them, I said, you know, "I'll support you. I'll do it." And I've talked to Jake about this. I'm not opposed to giving him what he needs as far as the time to get the pellets off. I am opposed to seeing it go to anything other than the residential or the, you know, the, going back to that zoning after the chips are removed. So I'm not here saying that I'm against them giving the zoning. I'm for you giving him the zoning for a temporary basis. I am against it going to anything other than residential, and I've fully expressed that to both of them. So just wanted to let y'all know where, where I stood on it, because I do have a very vested interest in this parcel, so. Okay? Y'all have any questions for me?
And just to be clear, clear real quick, you know, the front half being the residential and the back half being the commercial, were you okay with that or not okay with that?
I personally think, I agree with what Missy said, in my opinion. When I went to go through rezoning, I had to turn in a site plan. I had to turn in all kind of stuff to get Settlers Cove done. So I think it should revert back to the way it was. And then, in my opinion, at that point, when you are finished with what we're doing, I think a site plan should be submitted to show what you or we may be doing on this part and what you are planning to do on that part. But in my opinion, I think no matter, if it's ever changed, I don't think you can go now from residential and zone it commercial without turning in a site plan to show exactly what you're doing. I don't see where that's even an option to be, where it could be approved as anything but special use or back to its current zoning until a site plan is approved. Is that accurate on that? No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm not asking from whether he likes it or not. I'm saying...
You need to address us.
Oh, I'm sorry, sweetheart, because I'm, I didn't, uh... All, all I was saying was that I would feel like a formal site plan would have to be submitted to change zoning of any type other than what it is currently.
Not, not on PD.
Not on a PD. And just to clarify again, if we don't approve a PD text, you can't have a permitted or special use for this type of operation. I, I think Stephanie said that you can't have this kind of special or permitted use in residential zoning. You can have it in a PD text, but not in residential. So we need PD text and a permit, permitted use for a short period of time. Otherwise, it just stays like it is out of compliance.
So the way that this request is written is exactly the way we want it, with the exception of the time period?
No, it has it as a special... No, it has it as a special use, which is, then has to have another public hearing.
But this is what she said we had to have.
Well, I'm also wondering, you want to strike the commercial uses as well? You were saying you only wanted residential uses, but then allowing the storage as a special, is that right?
As a short, so if it's only a residential PD, can you still have this as a permitted use for a short period of time?
I think so.
Can I ask a question? I don't understand, I'm, I'm kind of caught in limbo here. I don't understand why this has to be so difficult. And is there any way that we can give Mr. Kirkland permission to do what he's doing on his property until he gets it cleaned up? When he gets it cleaned up, he comes back to us and says, okay, now, this is what I want to do. Ms. Leaf, do you understand what I'm asking? Is that...
Yeah, that's what Clint said, and I'm amicable to that as well, I have no problem with that.
Why aren't we, why are we making this complicated? That it seems, I don't know the legal aspect of it, I'm certainly not a lawyer. But it seems like to me, we can find some lane to give Mr. Kirkland what he needs to do, what he needs to do, in whatever amount of time that we come to, whether it be 12 months, 18 months, or 24 months. And then say, if you do, when you get that done in 18 months, you're going to come back before us and you're going to ask us for permission to do what, you know, what, what is appealing to Mr. Miller and every other neighbor that lives there and every other citizen in this county. And it...
I got no problem with that.
And if I can answer what you're asking, so, so basically what one option could potentially be is, they do not need to do a rezone right now at all if, if the county was willing to work out basically a remediation plan with Mr., with Mr. Kirkland. So whether it is 18 months or shorter time period, I can't speak for what the, you know, what the board would want to do with that. Because two years is a very long time for someone to, you know, clean up a, a site for code enforcement. So that's something I wouldn't be able to speak to tonight. But that might be one option, is if there is a cleanup plan in place, he's actively doing that, not bringing any more material on the site, and he's, that, that might be one option and there's no rezone. Or there is a rezone to, whether it's residential uses or commercial uses, and then he would have to come back before this board for a site plan for multifamily or for commercial. And then he would, if he's doing single family, you know, he would do a preliminary plat and final plat, you know, through the county. But that would still require the, the rezone to do that piece if he's going to be adding commercial to the site. Is that, does that kind of encompass a couple of options that you're thinking of then with that?
Yes ma'am. I want to make it as simple, in layman terms as it possibly can be, to get code enforcement off of Mr. Kirkland. That he, you know, he can move his chips, he can do what he needs to do. And I hope in this process, he's learned a lesson on this, that you just don't do this. When an opportunity, I have opportunities that's happened to me for 30 years that I could have made a lot of money off of, but then I say, you know what, what are the consequences to that? I probably could have been involved in this deal if I would have wanted to be, but there's a lot of worms that can get out of that can, okay? And Mr. Kirkland's a very smart individual. I hope he's learned a lesson. And if we give him the opportunity, whatever this board comes to, whether it 12, 18, or 24 months to get this cleaned up, get code enforcement off of him, I think he'll be happy.
I can handle that, yes sir.
And then at that point, him and Mr. Miller, or him and his developer, can come in here and ask for, this is what we want to do with Mr. Hightower, this is how we want to do it, and could we get y'all's approval?
I would agree with that, you know, just to kind of shorten the discussion, you know, if we can give him the time that he needs to clean up everything. And whether that be reduced to 18 months, you said you're favorable with 18 months?
Yes sir, I would agree.
It's an unfortunate situation that really needs cool heads just to get it done. And, you know, and that, that's all I'm going to say about it.
And then, Madam Chair, just a reminder, the public hearing is still open, so if we want to finish that up before we do some further conversation, that, then we can close that.
I think we've spoken for and against. I'm not sure, is there anyone else in the, within the area that would like to speak against or for? Because I'm confused about where we are now. We've talked so much.
If I may speak real fast, I guess you can say this is in favor of the PD text versus going down another path of just allowing the use with the existing zoning. If we were to do that, then there wouldn't, we could put a timeframe on it, but it seems like, I don't know if you have something to say about that, because otherwise, why do we go through the whole exercise? Because our point is that we just want to get this to a point to where we can give them a timeframe, because we don't want to do it indefinitely. That was the reason why we pulled the limited industrial rezoning, because then there would be no timeline on it. And so that way we can get it to a future use that's something that is very clear, and that's the point of the PD text. If we were to do a motion to only do residential, that can, like I said, I don't know if Mr. Kirkland's in favor of that, but even if we do commercial, no matter what, those uses would still have to go through a site plan. And so that's kind of my answer to Mr. Miller, is that we, we can't just go in there and do something without county permission from here on. No matter what we do going forward, it'll still have another opportunity for the county to approve what goes forward on the site. So that'll still show, buffers everything else.
Mr. Hightower, two years...
Yes sir. Yes sir, we can. So I guess, so then my question is, is where do we stand in terms of, of, are we trying to say we're going to remove the PD text and just put a timeline on it?
I think it's got to come back to us, I mean...
Well, that's, that's my only comment, is just that, is that no matter what we do, if we do a PD text, whether we alter it as it is now, nothing else, there will be not, there will be zero building permits issued without coming through site plan again. And so, sorry?
I don't think we can...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we, I mean, Commissioner, right, I don't think we can accomplish, we, the Mainland Planning Commission, what you would like to accomplish. That's got to be between Mr. Hightower and the county, the attorneys and the commissioners. We got to decide, I think, if we want to give him, approve a PD text with a permitted use or a special use. Special use has to go have public hearings and come back to us and the commission. Permitted use could be part of the PD text and doesn't have to have another, another public hearing, correct? If we went with the words permitted use versus special use?
That could be a revision that you, that you recommend to the Board of Commissioners tonight.
Right.
Let me ask a question to my fellow commissioner. Commissioner New, you're one of the most experienced commissioners on this board. What is your feeling to, how do you stand on this?
So I would like to propose, we do approve a PD text that at this time is residential, single family and multifamily use only with a permitted use for the material storage for 12 months. And then I think he can come back with an amendment to the PD text when all the material's gone and say, now I want to show you what I really want to do, which is the commercial piece on this side. And hopefully with that, could go ahead and show us exactly what he wants to do so the surrounding neighbors can be more vetted and more comfortable with it. I don't know that there's, you know, the faith there yet. And I, I don't see rewarding at this point with commercial zoning.
Yes ma'am.
That's my thought.
Thank you.
And, and also, if I understood correctly, when we were asking what the gray material was...
Yes ma'am.
You didn't, you didn't bring that to begin with from, from the fire, is that correct?
That was brought shortly afterwards, it was, you know, a couple of months later.
So you added something to what you already had?
Yes ma'am, I did.
And you should not have done that, is that correct?
Yes ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment now about what y'all are asking to do?
I think you got to close the public hearing.
No, we're, our public hearing is closed.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, is that what you're saying? And so now I can invite him to, okay, now you can come back up and speak.
So I'm amicable to all that. I mean, obviously, I've known Clint Miller a long time. You know, me and him are, you know, good friends and we definitely want to be good neighbors. So I have a problem with none of that. I would like to have 18 months, if that's possible, versus 12, just as a matter of, you don't know what's happening with, you know, you have COVID, you have, you know, Russians, the stuff over there, I mean, you just don't know what the, you know, what the future could go, hurricanes, you know, that sort of thing. So just a little bit of extra time just to, you know, make sure that I've got time to get it all out of there and not be getting in trouble again.
Well, hurricanes would scare me bad because it would go away, so, so we need to get it done before hurricane season.
That's the only request I'd have, and I'd be okay with the rest of the amendment there.
Including moving the entrance to Pickrick Street?
Yes sir, including moving the entrance to Pickrick.
And...
If you give me 30 days to move the entrance to Pickrick or something like that...
That's, that's reasonable. Now, let's address future haul-ins. Are you going to stop hauling into the site?
We already have stopped hauling into the site.
You have.
Yes sir, Perth County, yes sir.
Okay.
Make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the PD text with the following changes, that it will be for residential, single family, and multifamily uses only. That the owner will have 18 months to remove the material storage, so he would have an 18-month permitted use for material storage. That he will add, make the entrance and exit on Pickrick Street and also install a fence that is solid in nature, that, that blocks the view. And no additional haul-ins of any sort.
Do you have a height on the fence?
Six feet.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposition? So the motion carries.
If I could clarify real quick, the fence was just along Glendale, is that correct?
Correct.
Not Pickrick, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Missy.
You're welcome.
There is a, there's a residential, can we click back real quick? Click back further? Right there. Okay, so on Glendale here, the fence, what you're referring to is going to come down to approximately, you know, in here somewhere, and then there's another jut-out piece of property here that's owned by another individual. So I would just do this front area here, is that correct?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys. Okay, we still have two more items on our agenda. We have public hearing ordinance amendments. TA 4764 Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance Amendment, county-initiated request to amend Glen County zoning ordinance section 727, beach and dune protection to reduce the development setback line areas with an active-stable dune sequence to increase the development setback line for areas without an active-stable dune sequence to transfer several conditional uses to permitted uses and for other purposes. Stephanie.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is TA 4764 Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance Amendment. So there are a few different ordinance amendments that have been kind of moving through our process separately from the larger zoning update process that our consultant, TSW, is working on. This is one of them. This was initiated by the Board of Commissioners. Some of the concerns they had had that led to this initiation, these permits go before the Island's Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, but it's a duplicative process in some ways. The applicant needs to go before the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to get permitting to do a pool or patio or some landscaping on their beachfront property. And then they are also required by our code, in many cases, if they're in a certain development setback, to come before the county and get a conditional use permit. And that goes, you know, to the IPC and the VOC for public hearings. The DNR cannot start processing the permit until they are finished with the county's process. And so there were some concerns, you know, expressed about how long that process takes and just, you know, how can we try to eliminate some red tape and try to streamline this process? So that's where this came from. So this has gone before the Island's Planning Commission. There were, they had a work session, they talked about it at a couple of different meetings over the last few months. And it did get a recommendation from the IPC, was a unanimous recommendation for this particular draft that's before you tonight. Basically, in a nutshell, this, we tried to kind of match up with the development setbacks that the DNR has. So it's 25 feet from a stable dune, going landward from a stable dune is 25 feet from a rock revetment. And so really just kind of mirroring their setbacks. After the DNR had changed some of their regulations about, I think, a year or two ago, they, our ordinance ended up being much more restrictive, and so that caused some other issues as well. There are some uses that had been conditional, conditional uses under the, the current ordinance, such as landscaping and some different patios. And they are now permitted uses, so they don't have to go through the conditional use permit process. So those were really some of the, kind of in a nutshell, the biggest changes that, that's made to this draft. And Mr. Worley from the County Attorney's Office has been involved in this process throughout the last couple of months as well, or a few months. So he's here this evening if you have any specific questions of him. And this is a recommendation from, I'm sorry, a recommendation to the board. So the IPC, as I mentioned, did unanimously recommend it. And then, because it's a text amendment, it goes before both, both commissions, before it goes to the board. So these are your possible actions. And it is a quick overview of it, but feel free to let me know if you have any questions or Mr. Worley can help as well.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Leaf? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Susan Inman. I'm the Coastal Advocate with 100 Miles. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization working to protect Georgia's 100 miles coast. Flooding and storm surges due to sea level rise are threats we face regularly on the coast of Georgia. Glen's own Sea Islands, St. Simons, Jekyll Island, Little St. Simons are all experiencing nearly monthly sunny day flooding. Also, sea level rise in Glen County is projected to be around 30% greater than the global average. This is according to the Glen County Shoreline Protection Plan, which is the handout that I'm handing, that I'm, that you are getting now, is a part of this plan. And so, just to show you what I'm speaking about tonight. Decreasing the development setback from 40 feet to 25 feet only benefits a few, but will affect all of us. This proposed change will take Glen County from being a leader in the shoreline protection to a county that puts its residents at risk. In the face of rising seas and increasing storms and flooding events, our leaders should be embracing strategies that protect people from our homes, not rolling back the ordinances that protect our communities. Remember that Hurricane Matthew caused $11.4 million in damages in Glen County alone. The current 40-foot setback reduces structure damages from flooding because it allows the water to move onto land and back out without taking man-made items with it. It also allows the sand sharing system, including the dunes, to move in the way it needs to, which means less erosion and increased natural protection. When stormwater damages a structure on one property, that debris can travel to another person's property or out to sea. If it goes out to sea, it ends up on beaches, in the estuaries, or in our rivers. At that point, whose properties, whose property's rights are more important? Because all, or besides all that I just mentioned, the proposed changes to the permitted uses adds confusion to the development process. The Georgia Shore Protection Act does not allow development seaward of the state's 25-foot setback line without a state permit. So changing permitted uses to include terraces, patios, on-grade decks... So changing permitted uses to include terraces, patios, on-grade decks, fences, landscape walls, retaining walls, stormwaters, excuse me, stormwaters or management systems, and landscaping is contrary to the interest of protecting personal property and is not consistent with state law. So to close, I reiterate what I and many others have encouraged you to do, is to avoid unnecessary confusion, avoid the destruction of very useful and needed setback and potential damages to private property and lands, and do not approve the recommended changes to the county's Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance. Thank you for your time and service.
The public hearing is now closed. Commissioners?
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
The state is 25. So the 40 has been in our ordinance, I think, since the '70s. It's been there a very long time, and there's been some mixed enforcement of that over the years. And that's, so it's been 40. And what happened in, like I said, it was a year or two ago when DNR updated their regulations, and that's when it became a very big differential between the different regulations. So we still had ours at 40, whereas theirs was 25. And so there was, you know, a lot of area that applicants would get, you know, or would be looking towards getting a permit from the state, but then whatever they're looking to do, you know, may or may not be allowed by the county. So that's kind of where that difference really became most apparent over the last couple of years.
So this is eliminating the confusion because right now you could have a different, you could have the 40 being affected by the county versus, so we're basically all getting on the same sheet of paper.
That's correct.
And taking confusion out of government.
Yes, yes.
Family comes and says they want to build something within the 40-foot setback, and the county allows that. And then the next, the next family next door says, "Well, if those people put their swimming pool and what have you within 25 feet, why can't we?" And then the county says, "No, we not, we won't let you do it." It happens frequently.
I would say in the last, in the last few years since we've been enforcing the regulations as they are written, all of the conditional use permits that have come before the county have all been approved. So we have not, at least in the recent years, have not had a situation where, you know, neighbor got their pool approved and the next-door neighbor did not. So in some situations, there may be some, you know, some changes or revisions to maybe landscape materials or, you know, some small changes to the plan, but overall, what someone has been applying for, they have all been approved by the county. But I can't speak to prior years, though.
Stephanie, who has the final say-so on this? I guess my question is, if for whatever reason Glen County decided to make their setback 15 feet, does the DNR have ruling over that?
They would, yeah. They would be most restrictive, so they would. And we actually do have some language in the code that does clear that up and state, yes, whoever is most restrictive. So the DNR would have to be followed, not the county then in that case.
And Stephanie, isn't part of this too, because the state finally came up with a better way to define the shoreline protection line, which I can't remember, there's an acronym for it, but that it's, you know, doesn't run from this tree over here to this weird rock over here to the dune over here, that it's much more clear-cut where the protection area is. And so now, maybe more than ever, it makes sense to have 25 feet versus 40 because used to, the shoreline could be right at the rocks, you know, and then, so it varied a lot based on the tree rule and all that weird stuff they used to have. So it's much more clear now what they're protecting.
That, yeah, that is correct because it was, it was based on a tree or a house built a certain year. And so sometimes you would have this zigzag on a lot, which is hard to design around.
And the state would be typically more restrictive in most cases, would you say? Or not?
They typically have been until, really until the recent revision where the county became more restrictive. So, yes, exactly. I mean, the state has a very thorough process to review all of the permits that they do. So I think, you know, part of the reason going through this process was, you know, having a faith, having faith that the state is doing a very thorough process and their due diligence in reviewing those.
Commissioners, any more questions? Ms. Leaf?
Ready for a motion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that pursuant to Section 1106.1 of the Glen County Zoning Ordinance, the planning commissions shall take one of the following formal actions, which will be recommend approval of the ordinance amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. So all in favor? Any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, the next and last item on our agenda is TA 4943 Setback Exemption for Heating/Air Conditioning Units Ordinance Amendment, County Initiated Request to Amend Glen County Zoning Ordinance Section 302 Definitions and Section 603 to exempt heating slash air conditioning units elevated above grade from yard setback requirements.
Thank you, Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is TA 4943, and this is another county-initiated amendment to the code. And the concerns that have been brought up regarding this is that HVAC units that, on residences, if it's elevated above grade or whether it's at grade, they're treated differently. So an HVAC unit that's at grade can encroach into the setback. So if your setback's seven feet and your HVAC unit goes three feet into the setback, that would be allowed. However, if your HVAC unit is elevated, then that wouldn't need to meet the setback. That's something that, you know, developers need to be planning ahead for and designing for that and knowing whether, for whatever reason, they need to elevate their HVAC units. The Federal Emergency Management Agency and the National Flood Insurance Program does require that HVAC units are elevated if you're in the floodplain. So a lot of our properties are required to elevate their HVAC units. So because of that, those HVAC units have to meet that seven-foot setback or whatever the setback is. So what this seeks to do is just to equalize whether you're elevated or not, you can encroach into the setback. So this code changes a couple of sections in the zoning code regarding that. We have had a few applications for variances that dealt with this recently, and I just wanted to give, you know, kind of one example of recent variance that came before our Board of Appeals. And then actually, this one was appealed to our Board of Commissioners. So in this situation, they're not, they were not in the floodplain, but because of some drainage issues, they were choosing to elevate their HVAC units. So because of that, they needed to meet the setbacks and, you know, sought for a variance to reduce those setbacks. And so this is just some photos of elevated HVAC units. So this did go before the Islands Planning Commission for their review on February 15th. The IPC did vote to deny this. They voted 6-1. Commissioner Duncan opposed to recommend denial of the amendment to the Board of Commissioners. Some of their concerns that were expressed were perhaps all HVAC units should meet setbacks, that none of them should be exempt, everything should meet setbacks. And then I know there's also been concerns brought up about, you know, on a larger home, there might be multiple air conditioning units. And, you know, if you're closer to a neighboring home, you know, there may be concerns about multiple units being elevated and just the impact on neighbors. So the IPC did recommend to deny it. So these are your possible actions tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of Ms. Leaf?
I have a question. Did the staff have a recommendation on this?
We did not. I mean, this was requested by our county commission, so they are seeking to allow all AC units to extend into the setback.
Ms. Leaf, if I build a house next month, I pretty much know where the setback lines are going to be, okay? Have my house hugged, and then I come to you after the fact, after I have it built, and say, "Hey, Ms. Leaf, I made a little mistake, and I didn't have anywhere to put my air conditioning unit." Happens all the time. Pretty much, the county's going to say, "Okay, we'll give you a variance." Correct?
We would say, as the county staff, that you would need to apply for a variance for the Board of Appeals.
And they'll pretty much, what a point I'm trying to make is, they'll pretty much give you that variance, right?
Well, the current board has denied a couple of them, so it depends on, you know, who's on the board and what the facts are that they're taking a look at. But in recent, at least in the recent couple of years, they have denied those. So we've had a couple of appeals going to the Board of Commissioners, which is what an applicant can do if they are denied by the Board of Appeals.
So what's before us is whether or not we want to treat elevated air conditioning units the same as air conditioning units on the ground.
Correct.
And so it just seems inherently not to make a lot of sense based on everything that we talk about, that we would punish a property owner for taking flood, you know, preventive measures, whether they're required or they do it voluntarily. Give you an example, I have a pool pump, a pool heater at my house that no longer sits on the ground, even though it could. So, you know, I would be in favor of this in that I don't think we want to make it more difficult for folks to take efforts up front to avoid flood losses.
And with that said, pool equipment can, is allowed in the setback, right? It's not?
I think it is not. It is not.
Okay.
Mine's not in the setback.
Commissioners, any other, any other questions of Ms. Leaf? Okay, this is a public hearing. And is there any member of the public who would wish, who would wish to speak? Since we're pretty much empty, I think not.
One more question.
Okay.
So a lot of air conditioning units that are the split units, just I'm curious about this, the outside piece attaches to the house, it does not sit on the ground. So with, where do those fall if they don't touch the ground?
The outside piece.
So if you have a split unit, you know, the outside piece, the outside air, it doesn't look like that, you know, more like a box.
Or you mean it's attached to the house?
Yeah, it's attached with steel brackets to the house.
That's the compressor.
Yeah, the compressor.
The outside.
The compressor. You know, there, it's not touching the ground, they actually bolt it to the side of the house.
Yeah, it's like cantilevered off the side of the house.
Yeah, it like comes with brackets, so it's not down in the water or whatever.
And generally... And generally, they're not as big, what Missy's speaking about.
I'm just curious how y'all handle those, because those are becoming much, much more prevalent. They probably are mostly under the eave of the house, but, yeah.
If they, yeah, I mean, if something's, I mean, eaves can extend 18 inches into a setback, but we don't specifically say, you know, a unit would be allowed to do that. So, yeah, that would be something that would not...
I was just curious, it's not a...
That's a good question.
I don't understand the difference of an air conditioning unit if it's on the ground or if it's elevated six foot on a stand. Could somebody please explain to me the difference?
And I think, yeah, I think that's what our board's questioning too, and that was the, you know, the theory behind this, is there really isn't, maybe isn't a difference. I think a lot of our codes deal with this at grade. So if it's at grade, you know, at-grade patio, it can extend into a setback. But as soon as you have a deck that's elevated, and some codes will say anything elevated 18 inches or more, you know, that has to meet setback. So I think it's just something that's, yeah, commonly, just what is at grade or above, regardless of what it is, that seems to be the difference of whether you meet setbacks or not. But I, but I think that's the question that, you know, folks are having, is why are we treating them differently?
I always wonder, who was the person sitting at a desk that said, "You know, I would like to have air conditioning units that's sitting at grade, but I wouldn't like to have air conditions that's sitting on a stand five feet in the air in the setback." I just don't understand that kind of thinking. I mean, if it's there, it's there. If you absolutely had to move it for any reason, if you, if that was the only access you had to get behind your house, for whatever reason, okay? You could tear the five-foot stand, even if it was concrete or block, you could tear it up, you could move the air conditioner. I could remove that probably in less than 30 minutes and have it out of the way, and then we could get back behind that house and do what we needed to do, and then put it back. It's those people's land, really. I mean, now, if it crosses the landline, I understand, but it's those people's land. You can put a fence right on the landline. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners? What say you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment TA 4943 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It passes unanimously. And we are done.
Thank you.
I don't know.